The April eighteenth meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, under our universal law of justice, health, and moral.
Thank you, and Kate, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent. Miles Lessinger.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on April fourth?
By motion, we approve the minutes of April fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We have our public comment session, but I don't think anyone is here to offer public comment. No final orders or resolutions, no public hearings scheduled, no old business scheduled, no new business scheduled, but we do, we will continue with our Planning Commission training. So Mr. Thompson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. In your packet, I gave you a report that we prepared last year on housing in the city. This is in response to requests for statistics about the city demographic information. So I give you this that has a lot of information on housing in Lincoln City. It does not include Rhodes End because at the time it was prepared, the Census Bureau figures on which it's based did not include Rhodes End. But you all, especially Commissioner Robinson, asked for some statistics, so tonight we have some statistics. We should have statistics come out. Okay. Houston, we have a problem. Okay, now we don't have a problem. Some statistics. Now, a lot of this comes from a presentation that Allison Robinson from the Urban Renewal Agency and I gave to the library when they were working on their master planning. First thing is the population pyramid for Lincoln City. One thing that jumps out is that it's not a pyramid. We have a relatively large group of older people, particularly above, say above forty-five, but especially in the fifties and sixties. That's baby boomers. So we have a lot of retirees here, more than you might think. One thing that also jumps out is we don't have many children. Usually you would think it would be like a pyramid where there would be many more people at a younger age than at an older age, but we don't have that here. Again, principally because of the number of retirees we have here, the proportion of retirees. On income, you can see the median household income in Lincoln City. This is based on the Census American Community Survey, five-year estimates, was thirty-five thousand five hundred compared to the Lincoln Counties of forty-two thousand four hundred and Oregon in general of fifty-four thousand one hundred. There's a difference between household and families. Family is a subset of household because you have individuals who aren't related, who aren't a family living together, and that can be, that becomes a household under the census definition. Also, you've got employment, well, what this shows is that Lincoln City has a relatively low income level compared not only to Lincoln County but also to the state. And that's important because of when we look at housing affordability, it really pushes down the level that people are able to pay for housing. Employment status on here, again, this is from two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen. Actually, unemployment is, unemployment is probably considerably lower than is shown here. I think we're right around five percent right now. I know it shows five point one for Lincoln County, but we're very close to full employment in Lincoln City, in Lincoln County. If you look around, you'll see a lot of places where for years you never saw a help wanted sign. You see them around a fair amount now. People are having a relatively harder time finding employees. Talking to some business owners, they're offering higher wages than they would have recently just to try to get some people to apply for the jobs. And you also see, this also shows people with income below poverty levels, over a fifth of the people in Lincoln City have a, are below the poverty level, and almost a fifth of the families are below poverty level. And this shows how unemployment has changed. You can see the big jump in unemployment right after two thousand eight, that's the recession hitting, and then it gradually goes down to now where we're back to pre-recession levels, around five percent. This is a sort of unsmoothed, it shows the seasonality, it's so jagged, it shows the seasonality of employment in Lincoln City where you get the, you get a big boost in unemployment during the winter, and then somewhere there's jobs, and then every winter there's unemployment again. And again, the big jump you see in there is the beginning of the recession. You've all seen these on the back of people's cars, that's your family representation, you've got mommy and daddy, and Billy and Suzie and baby, and spot and fluff, but that's not Lincoln City. If you look at this, Lincoln City, the vast majority of households are one and two-person households in Lincoln City. Out at the extreme, at the right end, there's a few fairly prolific breeders, but the vast majority of, again, is one and two-family person households. Educational attainment, about fourteen percent of people do not have a high school diploma, adults do not have a high school diploma. Then about thirty-two percent have a high school diploma or GED, and about twenty-seven percent have some college but no degree, five percent with an associate's degree, fourteen percent with a bachelor's degree, and about eight percent with a graduate or professional Housing occupancy and vacancy, this comes from the report that I gave you. What this shows is that excluding Rhodes End when this was done, we had almost fifty-six hundred housing units in Lincoln City, but over two thousand of those were what the Census calls vacant houses. And that's primarily second homes, about two thousand of them, and of those second homes, about five hundred or about a quarter of them are vacation rentals. One thing this also shows that owner occupied is less than a third. It's the smallest group of housing occupancy levels is owner occupied. Then renter occupied is right around a third, and then vacant is more than a third. So we have these two thousand dwelling units that are taking up our land and, you know, on our utility systems and so on that we have to provide for, and they do have an effect on the city. Then monthly owner costs, this is houses, people who have a house with a mortgage on it. If, the rule of thumb that the Housing or Urban Development Department uses, if you're paying more than thirty percent of your income for your housing, you're burdened by that. If you look at this, fifty percent, the bottom two rows there, fifty percent of people with mortgages in Lincoln City are burdened by the cost of their housing. For renters, it's almost sixty percent against the bottom two here. So housing affordability obviously is a huge issue here in the city. That's what I have on statistics for tonight. And if you have questions or comments or anything?
One question. What accounts for the lower income in Lincoln City as compared to other communities in the county?
We have a higher proportion of service industry positions and a lower proportion of the higher income positions. Like if you compare like to Newport, they've got, you know, the Marine Center, they've got, and they just have a lot of, or a relatively higher number of better paying jobs than Lincoln City does. Newport pretty much skews the rest of the county.
Do you know any of the numbers for the Rhodes End area? So, for example, do you know how many of the homes up there, or how many homes are in Rhodes End? Are there other ways to get at these numbers besides the Census?
Yes, there are. Actually, we can get that information. I did, I could put, I could add it in, but it takes some, takes some work to pull out Rhodes End and then stick it in there. We, I'm just trying to remember the exact numbers.
It's nine hundred seventy-one comes to my mind.
Yeah, there's something like nine hundred and X numbers, eight, nine hundred and fifty dwelling units in Rhodes End. Now, one thing you can do is compare it to the rest of the city, where in the rest of the city, about ten percent of the housing units are VRDs, and in Rhodes End, it's about twenty percent. I think well over half of the dwelling units in Rhodes End are not, you know, they would be considered vacant because they're second homes or VRDs. Those of us who live there know, like, you walk through there at night sometimes, and there's no lights anywhere, because there's, nobody's home. Anything else?
Just one question. Back when you were talking about fairly close to full employment, is there any reflection in that, the folks that just leave, they want to take a job but they just leave because they can't find a place to live? How does that affect that unemployment number?
You know, I don't know how to answer that question. There are, there are people who have been offered jobs and haven't taken them because they can't find a place to live. That's what we're looking at, possibility of, what I would, I hate to use the term transitional housing, but so people can come in, take the job, come in, and not have to worry about finding a house, you know, the first two weeks that they're there or something, or the two weeks before they're there, they have a little bit of time to look around and find something. The city has three houses that we use for new employees, if they, if they want it, they can stay there for a limited period while they look for, look for permanent housing. So I don't know, I'm not sure there's any kind of statistics on people who don't take a job because they can't find a place to live.
I was talking to a member of the Chamber of Commerce today and mentioned the, and we've heard this anecdote before about the twenty nurses' jobs at a Spartan Hospital that went unfilled for quite some time, and some of them are still unfilled because the ones were qualified to take the jobs couldn't afford to live here. But more relevant to the Planning Commission, is there something the Planning Commission can do to smooth this process? I'm thinking specifics like our jurisdiction over zoning, are there things we can, or ordinances, are there things we could do to help folks who have a spare basement, for example, to rent that out at a reasonable price? I would expect of the nine hundred units you're talking about, probably several hundred of them have some kind of living accommodation that just doesn't quite meet standards.
Well, we have recently adopted an ordinance allowing accessory dwelling units, which would address that. One of the issues with that is when you say they don't quite meet standards, that's where we ran into with vacation rental inspections where they would have sleeping quarters or something that did not have proper egress. So it's one thing to provide a, you know, I've got a room in the basement, but there's going to be a way out if there's a fire and that kind of thing. So that can be a concern, but I think as long as they can meet standards, we allow them now.
Sure.
When I say meet standards, it would be fundamental building code standards, just fire and life safety. So any lot that, anybody that's got a house can have a second house, whether, or a second dwelling unit, whether it's detached or in the basement or in the attic or something like that.
Safety, I'm sorry.
Mr. Robinson?
Safety standards, I certainly am all over agreeing with that aspect of it, but some of the other, or some of the other things come to mind is, and I'm flogging this a little bit because I'm just familiar with one example, where the egress and the safety standards would be met, but there's no toilet, or there's no shower, or there's no kitchen facilities. Do we have ordinances that would prevent the use of a chemical toilet in that case? Or?
I don't, I'm not sure about that. The building code has something to say about what kind of sanitary facilities there has to be. We allow, in all the zones, if someone has a guest house, we define that as a dwelling unit that doesn't have cooking facilities. There's no requirement for cooking facilities, but you do want to have fundamental sanitary facilities. So we get building code or health code issues on that.
I would imagine if you were going to charge rent for a living space, that it would have to meet the basic requirements probably set forth by the state or the federal government. They have, you know, four walls, two windows, a door, and a, you know, a bathroom, a place to clean yourself, and a cooking area.
Mr. Lessinger, you had a question?
The city of Portland, I thought, had a loan program that would allow you to build an accessory dwelling unit and rent it out, and they'd pay for it on your land, hook it up to sewer, I think, and then after a ten-year period of time, the ownership of the dwelling went back to the homeowner.
Yeah, they have a provision where if you build an accessory dwelling unit, they'll loan you the money for it, as I understand it, or at least some of it. As long as you make it an affordable unit, you know, there was something that meets the standard for affordability for, I think it's the ten years, if you do that for that ten years, then you don't have to pay the loan back.
Is that something that the city would consider to maybe get more infill properties where there is a house?
I can't speak for the council, but, you know, certainly that's something that can be proposed. We don't have the pockets that Portland has.
That's true.
I have an idea that just came to me, and I'm not sure this makes much sense, but you mentioned the number of second homes that are vacant, and not counting the VRDs, and I'm not talking about them, but the other second homes, there are a lot of them, I, from impressionistically, in my own neighborhood, they're not used very much. And I was wondering, would it make sense to do an outreach to the owner of those homes, saying, we sometimes have an emergency need for rental units for new employees? Would you think about renting your place out for six months or five months or maybe even a year? And that might open up.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Available houses.
I like that idea.
Do you have a good list of the houses that are vacant and the houses that are VRDs and the ones that are?
Well, we can, we know which ones are VRDs, and we can, with, we may be able to tell which ones are, those vacant second homes. And one of the clues is if the, if the address of the owner is outside of Lincoln City, and we can look at who's paying the water bill and that kind of thing, and you can sort things and we can start to figure that out, so.
Well, how did they get picked as vacant? Somebody had to do all of that research already, so.
Well, they, they do surveys, which are confidential, and they don't do a hundred percent sample, and they have algorithms for coming up with the numbers. Like, I know one of the artifacts of the algorithms is they have, how many units are in duplexes, you know, two-family houses? How many units are there? And the answer they come up with is an odd number. You can't have an odd number of houses, of dwelling units in duplexes, but it's just the way they do the estimate. So, you know, we couldn't go to the Census and say, you know, and try to use their information, but, you know, there are things we can do to try to figure it out. And we can, you know, we can always be too broad and send out to too many people, and, you know, the people that doesn't apply to, oh, well, it's, costs us fifty cents.
The water department, then, would probably be a good, water and sewer bill would be a good indicator.
Yeah, that's another thing, if the water bill is really low, it's a pretty good indication that nobody's in the house. We have ways of approximating.
You mentioned in your report the large percentage of retirees in the community. I was wondering, is the economy that's associated with the retiree population, does that tend to lead to higher paying jobs when compared to the economy associated with the tourist?
That's a good question. One of the things is retirees probably have everything they want, you know, in a way, so they're not going out buying furniture as much, not, you know, buying the things that like a younger family would be doing on a regular basis. So I'm not sure what that does as far as the economy. One thing it probably means is that they're eating out more often. So I'm sure there are good data on what it means to have a high level of retirees, but I just haven't looked at it.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. We are, the reports and comment section, do we have anything more you'd like to say?
Yes, now putting on this hat. Two things, one is on June fifth at two thirty PM here at the council chambers, the, there'll be a joint workshop between the city council and the Planning Commission on the Nelscott Gap Plan.
And what date is that again?
It's June fifth, two thirty PM. Two thirty. The council has started having regular workshops on, some Monday afternoons, and this is one of them for June, again, for the, about the Nelscott Gap Plan, which has been in the works for some time, and we're getting to the end of it.
Will that discuss the overall plan for the east side of the highway at the Nelscott Gap area?
Exactly, yeah.
Right, it does, it does include some land to the west, on the west side of the highway, but the majority of it is on the east side.
And that plan is available online on the city side, is that correct?
Yes, or at nelscottplan.org, or com, com dot com, nelscottplan.com.
Any comments from our?
I have one more.
One, please.
There's, Planning Commissioner Training is available, this is on a Saturday, May twentieth, in Eugene. The Oregon chapter of the American Planning Association has a session that runs from eight thirty to four thirty, and the description is, "Join city and county planning commissioners from around the state as we cover the basics of land use planning in Oregon and the procedures and practices to make fair, defensible decisions." Sessions include making legally defensible findings, leadership role of the Planning Commission. During the afternoon, we'll split off city commissioners to focus on economic development and needed housing, and county planning commissioners to focus, to discuss farm and forest, land, and rural development. There is a fee for it, but if you're interested in it, let us know, we do have a budget for these things, so if you're interested in going on this.
What date is that again?
It's May twentieth, Saturday, May twentieth.
Thank you. Yeah, planning commissioners, any questions or comments? I have one, we mentioned at our last session, the need to publicize our, the opportunities people may have for accessory dwelling units, or cottage clusters, or, you know, tiny homes and so forth, and I thought, as we move closer to looking at the comprehensive plan and beginning to work on that, whether it might make sense to really have some kind of maybe half-day fair at the cultural center, on, you know, what are the opportunities homeowners can do to create accessory dwelling units, or developers can do to create cottage clusters that exist in the current code, and also give an opportunity to entrepreneurs that are pushing these tiny homes or these metal homes, and let them have booths, and, you know, talk about, you know, what their programs are like and what these houses are like and so forth, and just get the community talking about these issues and seeing what the options are. And I think maybe something like that would be a good lead-in to our looking at the housing issue as we move forward with the comprehensive plan. That's just an idea.
Thank you, yeah, actually, I've been thinking about something similar to that, so I like the idea.
Where do we take the idea like that to make it happen?
Just a matter of setting it up and doing it. There's timing issues, and also, I mean, I'm thinking about it in conjunction with working with builders in general on some other issues, so looking at that with our building department to see exactly how we might want to do that.
One more thing. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting of the project advisory committee for, technical advisory committee, I guess, for the economic opportunity analysis, housing needs analysis, and build of a lands inventory, and we discussed housing policies and economic policies. A couple of you were there, for those who weren't, it was an interesting discussion, and it involved, and there were five council members in the audience as well. So our next step there is to, we have finalized a list of policies and for housing and economic opportunities based on the comments from that day, and our consultants now will come out with a final report, which we will be taking through the adoption process.
Which includes? Which includes hearings here at the Planning Commission.
Are we having a workshop with the council and Planning Commission on that? I don't know that we are because...
I don't think we have one scheduled.
No, we had so many people at the meeting last Wednesday.
It's not to because we already basically did it, so.
On Wednesday, right? So, but you will all have a chance to hear about that and discuss it, and so that falls right in line with some of your discussion tonight.
All right, well, and we don't know what may be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Right.
All right, I think the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.